I call the planning commission meeting for December 7, 2023 to order and will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Ms. Small?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on November 9, 2023. So moved?
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so or some people may just have questions and we will try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a bar tavern at 8900 Mentor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Hi, everyone. My name is Forrest Page. I'm an architect with HSB Architects and I'm here to present on Crookedee Gaming Tavern, which is proposed to be a board game cafe with a bar. And we're here tonight because...
Just give us an address real quick, would you?
Sure. Yeah, it's 8900 Mentor Avenue, Suite K, Mentor, Ohio, in the Mentor Corners Shopping Plaza.
Thank you.
So we're here tonight because this business district, B2, a bar tavern usage is a conditional use that needs to be approved by the board in order to be permitted in this use district. So that is why we're here tonight to present.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about it.
I want to speak to it.
Name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Crook. My address is 7970 Windmill Lane in Mentor. I am one of the owners of the proposed bar. So what we're planning to do is open a, as Forrest stated, a tabletop gaming establishment, meaning just your typical board games, Monopoly, Scrabble, all the above, people to come in, play, family games, friends, all the above, no gambling. So, I mean, that's more or less it. You know, some food items, not a huge menu, but pretty much what it is.
Thank you. Just hold one second. Is anybody in here wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We have four conditions noted for the commission to consider.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Let me ask a question. I didn't quite understand this until later was explained to me what this was and that there's one over on the west side, right?
Correct.
Okay. Everyone's been real clear about no gambling.
Yes, sir.
Can you actually, can you control your guests from gambling among themselves? I know there's no formal gambling, but if you get people in this, in the one of the two party rooms and they're playing a game, can you distract, can you, do you operate this under the, with the understanding that they can't gamble?
Correct.
Okay. That's all, no.
Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman? Just real quick, the back two private rooms that you had there, just looking at the diagrams that were given, sorry, the tables, it said like screen in the table. Are there TV screens in the table or what are those for?
Yes, sir. Screens in the table.
Okay. So how are we playing board games on top of a screen? I've never been to one, so I don't, I don't understand it.
So, yeah, we are designing custom tables with TVs in the middle so you can connect your computer to it and a lot of tabletop games, probably the most popular being like Dungeons and Dragons. You know, you could set up your maps and other gaming accessories for the people that you're playing with. They have a lot of online interactive media associated with it. So, you know, if people want to bring that to the table, then they're more than welcome to.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Thanks.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions?
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you much.
We have a conditional use permit to allow an animal kennel at 8590 East Avenue. Is that applicant here? Come on up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
My name's Danielle Chapone. I'm at 6400 Centre Street in Mentor. We already have a unit at 8586 East Avenue. We're running a dog daycare and we do boarding out of there. At the moment, we're splitting dogs on specific days. So for 8590, we just want to do small dog daycare during the day there and then we do strictly training there at nighttime. That's about it. Like I said, we already have a spot, it's just kind of a little bit of an expansion. We are putting a fence up. At first, when I entered this, I said we were going to do a mobile fence, but what we tried to do, it left too big of gaps for the small dogs. So we ended up switching to this. And it's, it will definitely hold them because we have about five Great Danes who will jump on that in the big dog side. So I know it's definitely strong enough. So, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Maybe, excuse me, maybe the applicant could just speak to the traffic and where people park because I know in the back, I had a conversation with the applicant that the, there's really minimal parking in the back, but it would be helpful maybe for her to explain that.
So no one parks in the back at all. At the, all the way at the other end is a landscaping company and maybe once in the morning at night, they'll take a big truck, drop stuff off and they leave. So no one else uses the back at all. We do all park in the front. It is a little hectic in the mornings, but with daycare, people just drop off the dog and they leave. So it's not long-term parking.
Thank you. Kathy, anything else?
No, nothing else.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. I see that applicant is here. Please come up, give us your name and address. Let's talk a little bit more...
My name is Ben Beasley. I live at 85 Mount Vernon Court in Mentor. And I submitted new parking information and some of it just recently, just yesterday. And we've found a way to get 30 more parking spaces into the, into the back lot area. And Moving Solutions has agreed to, and started to clear out some of the, some of the back of their building there to make way for car parking. And then they've also have an application in for a conditional use permit for that front northwest lot that is for zero to five cars for Mentor Nissan to unload and load and use for temporary storage. So that opens up 47 of those spots in the up front northwest lot. So we've added, you know, I think now I don't, I don't think there's any, shouldn't be any parking concern. The other information that I submitted was some parking studies and we did some research on what other pickleball tennis facilities use for parking and most of those came out at, let's see. Sorry about that. Where's that data? Oh, yeah, an average of 3.8 parking spots per court. There was one, two, three, four, nine facilities in the area that we, we went and looked at their parking and how many courts they have. And that was the average 3.8 parking spaces per court. And that doesn't necessarily mean they're filling all those spots up either, but. And then the Ugo Park was a, a study done in Vancouver, British Columbia on parking for a new pickleball facility there. And although the study said you can't necessarily equate pickleball to tennis court usage because pickleball tends to have more doubles players than singles players, but the study also counted that in one of their traffic counts that they, even though there was 38 players there, there was only 30 cars. So that indicates that oftentimes people ride together and families play. So there's really only 1.2, 1.25 cars, no, people per car. So that helps the parking situation. We originally thought we may need as many as 50 spaces, but I would, I would say that we really only need 40 spaces based on this new data. And even, even if we have like a little 600 square foot lounge area, that, by your parking standards for a coffee shop or a tavern, that would add like eight spots. So we really only need about 26 for the courts and eight for the lounge area and then a few for overlap. So I think, I think there's more than enough parking here. We adding 30 spaces and gaining 47 spaces up front. So hopefully that addresses all your concerns on parking.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
So we were in receipt of the modified, or the updated parking diagram as, as Mr. Beasley noted. We went out today and did a field check and provided you the staff exhibit that's on the screen right now. Taking a look, if you could go back to their, their diagram, the, the rounded spaces up on the northeast corner there are the nine spaces.
Oh, I see.
We felt that, that maybe those could be better served in a, in a more perpendicular standard parking aisle. It will take away from the overhead garage door that, that exists there. They've indicated they have no need for the garage door, but there is one that exists as long as they're comfortable with the fact that that would be blocked off and no longer usable. Also, the spaces that they show up, yeah, well, those spaces, the five there are really not, the problem with that is, is there's actually an existing dumpster and there's a concrete enclosure that is flush up against the building. So where Larry's hovering over, there's, the one space there is actually the dumpster area. There is a parking space next to it, a makeshift parking space next to it. It is large enough to hold a car and then there are two spaces to, adjacent to it. So realistically, there's three spaces available there with the nine that are next to it that, that could be added if they are properly striped. That is still concreted area. We took pictures today. Currently, that is space that has, well, that's the Nissan's area, but if he gets to, yeah, that's exactly where those nine spaces would be. That's what we're looking at. So all of those would have to be removed, obviously, and stored elsewhere. You can see those two cars on the far left and then, yes, and then where, as Larry's pointing, there's the dumpster. So it's not, it's not exactly a movable dumpster area unless they were to take down the wall. So there would need to be some modifications made with moving of that, of those trailers that are there. We did add some spaces right where Larry's pointing that again seemed a little more realistic to the three that are out there now. There's, there's two or three out there now, two, that I'm just not sure how you would park there and then also park on the back aisle. It was too tight. So based on, again, a 22 minimum foot wide parking aisle and then those spaces, if those spaces were put in and striped, you could have an additional seven spaces there. So we calculated about 34 additional spaces in that upper area. So if you count the 34 plus the 22 and the 25, that's, that's 80, 81 spaces, I believe, up in that corner. And as we talked about at the last meeting, the likelihood of people wanting to walk too far, you know, there's, it diminishes the further you go, go from, from that back corner, the northeast corner of the site. The Nissan spaces still obviously need to be considered by you. There's, we're probably going to need more information because right now we don't have a lot with the application, but that's not under consideration tonight. The, the condition of the lot, as you can see, it's not great. It would be nice to see that patched and, and cracks, the cracks in there sealed up. The striping is not visible. That would need to be restripped as well. So once, I guess it depends on what's determined with how many spaces ultimately are, are devoted to the Nissan dealership. We're not privy to the lease agreement. So we don't know exactly. I know they're saying five, five cars at the moment, but again, that's up for consideration at the next meeting. But if that, if that lot's going to be used for, for patrons in the north, of the northeast corner of the lot for the two public sporting venues, we definitely feel that those have to be striped, restripped and, and that parking lot should be, should be repaired to some degree. And we've, tonight I gave you some additional conditions to consider, which would be modified from the conditions that were in your original packet in light of the new information and in light of the staff exhibit. It would give you the ability to call this back if for some reason you feel that there's not adequate spaces or you're hearing from us that there's not adequate spaces, that you would reserve jurisdiction to, to, to call it back. And if, if land bank spaces needed to be, you know, put in, then that would be something that would be considered. So those are our recommendations at this time. I do think, you know, I think that we, we're not disputing, as we noted in the analysis, we're not disputing the per court view. I still think we want to make sure we're, we're still considering worst case scenario and peak, which could really, that's somewhat subjective. So that's, those are our thoughts.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I just have a couple of questions just to think about this. We do have all this land bank space in the back, right? So if ultimately we need more parking spaces, there's space in the back to, to develop if necessary.
Need to be improved, but yes.
No, it has to be improved. I understand that. But there's space, so we're not, we're not in a corner if we find out that we don't have enough spaces.
Correct.
Can always come back and say, well, you're gonna, you gotta develop the rest of that or some of that lot. And this is just a question, this trailer park is kind of right in the middle, or trailer parking, is that just defined by lines?
Yes.
It's just a lined area? So if, if they're going to have to re-line this parking lot to make it work, is there a better place for the trailer parking, like where the 52 spaces are? Would it make sense to put your trailer, trailer parking over there and have more of the cars closer to where they're being used?
I can't change that. I can't change where the trailer is.
You'd have to, hey, give a, give your name and, name and address.
Ray Snyder, 8001 Moving Way, Mentor. I can't move those trailers. If you, if you've never driven a 70-foot truck, getting one turned around is a little tough. By design, that's where they need to be.
So the location is driving that, the parking?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I was just kind of thinking about, you know, if that, if they moved down and some of the spaces got closer to the, where all the people need to be, you know. And those, those trailers are part of the Moving Solutions operation, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Excellent.
I got one or two things I could clarify. Our entrance for the pickleball play will be more towards the front of the building, not in the back corner like the, for, for the volleyball. There's another door up towards, about 60 feet from the front edge of the building and that's where our entrance will be. So it is a little closer to that front lot. And that front lot is the same distance as the Mentor Court parking lots are from the Mentor pickleball courts. But, and then the overhead door, we, there are also two dock doors in that building. So we really don't, we don't, once we're running, we don't really need any of them, but we could use, you know, if we need to get something in and out, we can use the two overhead doors that are in the dock there and we don't need the one that's at ground level. So.
Is there anything else? Kathy, did they have this latest and greatest here? Did you get a copy of this?
I just got it, yes.
And then you have this...
They have those spaces up there.
You have staff exhibit A, 34?
Yes. Yeah, just, just got it.
So you're going to line this, you're going to line your parking lot to make it look like this?
Yeah. Yeah. No problem. We'll start working on it right away.
Kathy, anything else?
Nothing else.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Crocker? I have a, a little bit of a concern that we don't have a conditional use permit for the cars that are coming over from Nissan dealership. So, I mean, you say that it's going to be zero to five cars and no more than that, but I, I, we don't have that in front of us. I believe it wasn't filed in time and so...
That's correct.
So I would feel more comfortable to have that in front of me and all the details of that spelled out and the administration look at that so that I can be sure that it is indeed going to be zero to five cars. That sounds like a small amount of cars to be bringing over and I would, I would hate that, you know, sometime you go over there and you say, oh, we need to bring over 15 or 20 or whatever and all of a sudden we are short on parking in other areas. So that's my concern right now.
No, I, and I understand that. From what I read through there, you were looking to free up 30 of those spots, you know, so making 30, at worst case scenario, you know, and we discussed this with Nissan when we did the, when we applied for the conditional use permit, that this is a staging lot for cars that are going back. This is not storage for your, for your vehicles. This is for them to, for, to ease of access for a, a carrier to come in and grab those vehicles and not be parked on Tyler.
And throughout the time that you've had this agreement, what's like the maximum number of cars that you remember having there?
There, there was a time when there was 30, 40 cars, but it's, you know, you're talking about pre-COVID when they were making cars. That's not, that's not the condition anymore. Now it's, now it's basically just, you see what it is, you were there today. I can't make those, I can't make that happen. So, you know, it's a few cars and they're tagged to leave.
Your, your new conditional use permit, that you, you did apply for it?
Right, yeah.
And it does say zero to five?
Correct. I think maybe zero to six, zero to five, something like that, but, yeah.
Mr. Varga?
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Varga?
Kathy, do you feel comfortable with the fact that they've made an application for a conditional use permit for the parking, the Nissan parking?
I...
I mean, these are two things that are connected, but yet they're parallel and they're moving separately.
Yeah, I just think, I think for, for your review of the separate conditional use permit, I do think we should have a little bit more concrete information with regard to the number of spaces. And then those spaces kind of be somehow designated a little bit better in, on site. So that, obviously you want to protect that, those, those vehicles too, so...
Well, technically though, we'll, we'll get a application, technically maybe, or maybe with the next meeting we'll see.
Yes.
And if we don't agree, well, we can reject it, right?
Yes.
So we have that option?
Yes.
To deal with the conflict if there is one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the 11 stipulations dated December 7, 2023?
Received tonight.
Received this evening.
Well, two of those are crossed out, so are there nine? No?
Yes. Thank you.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
No.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, we have a architectural re-image of an apartment building at 7950 Mentor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Morning, members. Joe Straka, I'm the attorney for Menor Mall Village Apartments. Our office address is 11711 Lorain Avenue, Cleveland, Ohio.
Can I get the spelling of your last name, please?
Yes, sure. S.T.R.A.K.A. I have with me Lorain Johnson, who is the property manager there. Your address, Lorain?
7950 Mentor Avenue, Mentor, Ohio.
Basically, what we're trying to do is we have an old building, which is a brick building. We want to paint it to a nicer color, a lighter color, a better looking color. It's a 14 multifamily apartment buildings in this complex. It's on Mentor Avenue, right next to the mall over there. Basically, the situation is we have no issues with the proposed conditions that are listed, items two and three. We don't have an issue with items one. We don't have an issue with the coloring. The only slight complication which we have is that the proposed condition indicates that it should be stained rather than painted where possible. I'm not sure what possible means, but we have a report from Sherwin-Williams, who we've, we've done work for. I don't know if I was supposed to end this out in advance, but I have a letter I'd like to give to the members if I can.
Fantastic.
Basically, the, the gist of it is, is while you can in theory stain brick, the way Sherwin-Williams does it is they put a primer block on it and then they paint over the primer block and that has the benefit of a much longer lifespan. Staining only lasts three to five years where if you put a primer block on and then paint it, it will last 20 years. So the, the maintenance is far less, the longevity is long more and the, as far as the quality of finish, it's, I think it's, and that's in the eye of the beholder, I guess, but the, the finish looks fabulous with, with this plan. If we need Mr. Williams to come in from Sherwin-Williams, we could certainly do that. I'm not an expert on paint, I'm just relying on what he says, but everything else in the plan is, is perfectly acceptable. We'd certainly prefer to do the painting for that reasons. Indicate.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We honestly have no objections. We, obviously historically, we've, we've preferred the staining. There are a number of buildings that are, in fact, have already begun with the, with the paint work. We do think it looks nice. We don't object and with the letter with proof Sherwin-Williams is backing their product so that we're, we're comfortable with it as well. So I would just modify number one.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
You're painting, I see you're also painting window frames?
We are.
And like the, the columns holding up the entry canopy, stuff like that, that, so you're going to pick up, the drawing shows it, but you're, I mean, the image shows it, but you're going to pick up all the previous colors and you're going to improve the entire building 100%?
100, yes. We're not making, no structural changes, but the exterior, yes.
No, no, just all the, but you're, there'll be no areas where existing finishes are left with the colors they have now.
No.
Okay. And I, just to discuss that point, I, I mean, I, I'll go with Sherwin-Williams, they're putting up a big building, they must be doing something right. Typically in the past, and the reason we've talked about the staining rather than painting Typically in the past, and the reason we've talked about the staining rather than painting is that when you take paint and you seal the face of the brick, you trap the moisture in the brick. And that leads to a lot of different problems in, in the past in different buildings, different situations. Now, if Sherwin-Williams feels comfortable with this, to, you know, guarantee it, that's, that's some, this may be a newer product, maybe it breathes. We'll see. But that's the concept is that, and then the paint would chip off right away. You know, it would, because it was a blockage to moisture migration, the brick wouldn't dry, it would come through, it would peel the paint off. And in a short period of time, it would, it would look bad.
Yes.
So that's the reason we were looking for staining, because staining is much more permanent. It's in the face of the, of the masonry and it doesn't fall off. So if they're saying that this is, this has a 20-year guarantee, I'm good.
Anything else? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the three conditions, with the first one edited to be just painted.
Second.
Can we just clarify the wording on that?
Yeah, let's do that. Miss Cantanzarini? Mrs. Cantanzarini?
The brick building walls shall be painted and maintained for the life of the building. The colors shall be equivalent to the French, classic French gray proposed and included with the building permits middle.
I need a.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, anything?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. So is six to two, is that approved then?
Yes.
Okay.